It being six o'clock, I will call the October 2020 Town of Clayton Planning Board Meeting to order. For roll call, it looks like Mr. Avery is absent. See, do I have that right?
Frank Price is not here.
And Mr. Frank Price at the moment. That correct? And then, do we have, let's see, Marty, you moved up. Oh, no, okay, whose table is that back there? Sorry.
That's Nancy Meldum.
Nancy Meldum.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have adjustments to the agenda. I know of at least one adjustment that will need to be made, so I'll explain that, and then we can ask if there are any others. We're going to move item number 7A, the Mountains to Sea Trail Name Recommendation, up and discuss that right after we adopt the minutes. Are there any other adjustments needed?
There are not.
Thank you. Hearing none, we will move on to item number three, Approval of the Minutes. Are there any corrections to last month's minutes needed? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion to accept.
Motion to accept by Board Member Coats. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Lipscomb? Had to look at my list. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. So, the next item on the agenda, number 7A, Mountains to Sea Trail Name Recommendation. What we're going to do today is discuss as a board, a proposal to name a portion of that trail after Mr. Skip Browder. So, the idea for us today is to hear from those involved with that and to discuss it and hopefully reach consensus about the fact that we want to do this. After we've reached consensus, I can direct the Planning Department to bring us a resolution to the November meeting for us to vote on. And then after that, it would go to Town Council. So, at first at this time, I believe we're going to call on Mr. Butch Lauder to tell us a little bit about the trail and the background here.
Okay if I touch it?
I think we have wipes up there, right? Okay.
Okay, I'll wipe it off. Butch Lauder, 460-70, Second Street in Clayton, former Town Councilman here and current County Commissioner. Have with me tonight the fellow County Commissioner Jeff Carver, also a longtime friend of Skip. And just wanted to talk about Skip's vision that started in the late 90s, mid to late 90s for the Mountain Sea Trail, and the key role that he played in finding funding, tracking down people loaned properties to make that happen. And again, he started in the 90s, went through, you know, the recession, and through this whole time, Skip was, you know, looking for funding to make this thing happen. So, it wasn't like it was a one-year wonder project that he pulled together. It was over a decade that he spent working to make this happen. And I'm glad to see that we're considering doing this for my friend. He worked as Planning Director here, was very valuable in teaching me the things of planning that I know today, but also his passion for the quality of life that this project would bring. And I think, you know, looking back today, we look at the project as it sits now, and there's no denying that the impact that that project has had and that Skip has had on this community. So, that's really all I have to say, and thank you for considering it. I know we have a member of the Johnson County Planning Board who served with Skip when he was on the Johnson County Planning Board. So, I'll turn it over to Will Letchworth.
Thank you, Mr. Lauder.
Appreciate you cleaning it off.
Yeah, well. Good evening, thank you so much for giving me a few minutes this evening. My name's Will Letchworth, address is 35 Davis Road, Zebulon, 27597. I'm a member of the Johnson County Planning Board, and as Butch just mentioned, and I think he did a good job speaking about Skip's contributions to the Greenway. But Skip also made incredible contributions to Johnson County as a whole.
He served for 15 years on the Johnson County Planning Board, which at the time was the maximum you could serve. He was a friend and mentor to not only me, but many of the current and many of the past Planning Board members. I honestly believe the way that we run meetings now, the way that we are very deferential to the public, and really strive to give them an opportunity to come and say their piece. If you're going to put on a clean shirt and come to our meetings, you're going to get the opportunity to say what you think and tell us your concerns. And I truly believe that attitude that we have directly comes from Skip. He was an incredibly generous person, you know, with his time, with his knowledge, and we just, I mean, we honestly thank the world out of him, and we're really, really sad after his passing. You know, we, as a board, really searched for how to honor him in a meaningful fashion, and we just kept coming back to the Greenway because he was so passionate about that project and so proud of what it had become and what it meant for Clayton and what it meant for Johnson County as a whole. So, we, you know, started to work with Butch and floated this idea by him, and we're really appreciative of the town for considering this. We actually passed a resolution. I'm happy to share it with you tonight if you would like it. I've got copies of it here, also happy to read it at the next meeting if you would like for me to present it then. But, you know, really a resolution in support of honoring his memory in some way on the Greenway. And obviously, we would leave it up to the town on how they would choose to do that, but we feel very, very passionately, I mean, even to the point of all the board members said, "Look, if it takes some money to erect something, you know, just tell us how big a check." Because there's no amount of money that could, would ever be enough, I think, to honor him in the way that we feel like he should be honored. But I think something on the Greenway, or whether naming a portion of it for him, I think would be absolutely fantastic because he really was an avid supporter of Greenways and trails, and just contributed so immensely to that, to both, you know, the Samson Ranch Greenway and Clayton Riverwalk, and just to the county in general. So, thank you for giving me your time tonight, and thank you so much for considering this.
Thank you for those words, Mr. Letchworth. Much appreciated. So, ideally, we would hear from the board. I know for me personally, Mr. Browder is before my time. I've definitely heard a lot of really great things about him, and just to, for us as a board, to reach a consensus that we can direct staff to come back next month to us with a resolution for this naming. So, are there any comments from the board? Board Member Bissell?
Yes, I'm one of those board members that was here when Skip was the Planning Director. Skip's actually maybe part of the reason I'm on the Planning Board. He's spoken to me several times about that, and I cannot think of a better person to honor in this fashion. Skip was everything that Will and Commissioner Lauder had said, and I know Commissioner Carver could say the same. Skip was a great public servant and even a better person. He was absolutely, I don't know if he had an enemy in the world, but he was passionate about Town of Clayton, Greenways, the Planning Department, extremely knowledgeable. Skip, I first met Skip when he was with the Planning Department in the city of Raleigh in the late 80s, and I learned so much from Skip, not only about development codes, but, you know, about how to treat people. He's the kind of guy that could look a developer in the eye, tell them exactly what he didn't want to hear, but they shook hands and they were friends. Skip's just a great guy, and I'd just like to thank you guys for bringing this forward, and I'm 100% fully supportive of him.
Thank you.
I too had the opportunity to work with Skip back in the 90s, and I do agree that he was visionary, he probably does. I'll take that if he hadn't pushed it into council at that time, since he did, we probably would not be in the position that we're in now, or at least not this far along. So, I'm very supportive if the council does not see Skip these public resources. Over this, I would be glad to contribute also, because it would be very worthy of telling me how much you need to participate, so I do support him.
Excellent.
Chairman, I also served on the board while Skip was here. His death was a big loss to the Town of Clayton, Johnson County, and the total community, and I totally support this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from the board? I really appreciate hearing more about it. I didn't ever have the opportunity to meet Skip, but it sounds like this is definitely something that's fitting, and hearing the support with others in the board, then I'm comfortable going ahead and asking staff to move forward with a resolution for the Mountains to Sea Trail Name Recommendation in the name of Mr. Skip Browder, and bringing that to us at the November Planning Board meeting. Thank you all for being here. Oh, okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is number 6A, Adoption of the 2021 Planning Board Meeting Schedule. And hopefully, everyone saw that in their packet. Are there any questions about the schedule as it was presented? Okay, hearing none? Oh, yes, sir.
This year and last year, we've, we had the schedule, and then we adjusted the December meeting.
Oh, okay.
Is there, I haven't looked at the calendar for that, but is there any chance we would need to adjust the December meeting on next year's calendar?
Let me look. I didn't see that.
I think it was the 21st.
Okay.
I wouldn't think that would get in anybody's way, but...
Thank you for pointing that out. I know when I looked at the dates, I didn't see any issue. So, yeah, that's a good thing to bring up. It does currently fall on December, well, sorry.
So, we typically for Planning Board, I think this year's schedule is a little bit different than what we typically do, but usually it's on the fourth Monday of each month, but it has been adjusted to be on the 21st, which is a Tuesday, in case people are out of town and traveling for that fourth Monday, since it's only two days after Christmas.
I see, okay. So, you built that into it?
Mm-hmm.
So, we don't, we can just adopt as it is?
Mm.
Okay. Okay, any other comments then about the schedule at this time? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve by Board Member Powers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Board Member Coats. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is number 6B. This is the 160D Work Session, and we'll now hear from staff.
Good evening, Board. Haley Hoed, Senior Planner. So, this year, we've been working on our changes to the Unified Development Code to update it to reflect the 160D changes required by the state, and we've been working with Stewart Engineering to make those changes. And tonight Chad Serry with Stewart is here to present the highlights. We've gotten through one set of revisions, so he's going to go over the highlights and hopefully get some feedback from you all, so we can proceed forward. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Chad.
All right, well, good evening. My name's Chad Serry, as Haley mentioned, and we have been working with the staff on this, I guess going, how's that?
I guess it did not like the disinfectant.
Turn it down.
Don't take it personally.
That's okay. How about that?
I don't know why it's doing that.
Is there a number on there, Chair?
What's that?
It does not, I'm trying to just stand back.
All right, I'll stand back. How about that? That better? All right. It doesn't want to talk about 160D. Okay, so I'm going to stand back and talk a little bit. I feel bad that I have to, Marty's got to see me from behind while I'm talking. I apologize to y'all as well, but as Haley mentioned, we have been working with the staff on this project since late spring and are now getting to the point where we've gone back and forth and gotten to a point where we're ready to provide an update to the Planning Board. Tomorrow, we have a work session with the Town Council, and then we're going to move forward on the adoption steps for this. So, I'm going to explain what 160D is. I'm sure you've probably heard of it, probably from your staff over the last year or so. So, we're going to go into details of what 160D is, how it affects your ordinance, and what sort of those next steps are, okay? And so, if there are any questions, please feel free to stop me while I'm talking. I'll take a break also between some of the slides, just to see if there's any questions. So, Chapter 160D, it is probably the largest, biggest change for planning legislation that's been done probably in the last 30 or 40 years. It became effective in June of this year, and initially was required to be adopted by January 1st, but because of COVID, it got extended until July of 2021 for local governments to adopt these changes. And so, really, it consolidates a lot of the regulations. So, right now, there's a set of rules, General Statute 153A, that counties have to work under, and then there's another set of rules that local governments, I'm sorry, municipalities, cities and towns have to operate under, and that's 160A. And so, what this has done is it's put those two together into what's called Chapter 160D, and that helps with continuity. It helps clarify some regulations, some terminology that may have been different from town to town or from town to county. Again, uniform technology, terminology, and also some restrictions on imposing conditions. So, we'll go through what that means as far as your code is, but that's really the overall reason that we're going through this process. So, you're not alone. Everybody in the state of North Carolina has gone through this, or they're going through this process now. So, as far as the schedule goes, you'll see that, again, that we started this process back in April, you know, at several meetings with your staff, and we've continued to have those throughout that time, going back and forth, because what this requires is for us to review every single page of your UDC. And I know that sounds really exciting to a lot of y'all, and it has been exciting, right Haley? Yeah. But it really does require us to go through every single page and to analyze every sentence, every reference to the general statutes, to make sure it is in compliance. And we've done that. We've gone back and forth with your staff, and they've done the same thing. So, I've always heard a joke that when you hire a consultant, sometimes the consultant makes the staff work more, and they probably would agree with that. But it is a partnership, and it's a teaming thing, and we've been working with them throughout this process. And so, back in August, we had a work session with council to kind of update them on this process, along with the comprehensive plan process, which I'm sure you've all heard about as well. And now, we're at that stage where we're giving a work session on this to the Planning Board, and as I stated earlier on, the council work session will be tomorrow afternoon. And then, the next step that we'll go into is kind of a public meeting that we're going to have on November 10th. And that's going to be a combination of this, but the main focus of that will be the comprehensive plan, so getting your citizens to come out to provide input, get feedback, you know, do some voting on some things, and provide their input on the comprehensive plan, but they'll also be able to learn more about this process as well. Following that, we will move to the Planning Board Official Recommendation in December, and then, if everything goes according to schedule, it'll be adopted in January. So, you'll be way ahead of the game as far as the deadline goes for adoption. You know, the other thing that we have going on, which we certainly want to make sure you're involved on, involved in, is the comprehensive plan process. And so, that's something that is just getting really getting geared up as well, and I'm sure your staff have been communicating with you, but that is something that's going along at the same time as this. And then, after this process and after the comprehensive plan is done, we'll be doing a full UDC update. So, we get to be with the Town of Clayton for quite a while, and we're real excited about that. So, as far as the 160D, as far as setting up some of the way the processes are done, it really broke it down into three areas, and it really clarified these three areas. One is your legislative process. So, the rulings that are generally set legislatively are done by council, you know, rezonings, text amendments, things of that nature. They're provided, so the Planning Board provides a recommendation on those things. Second part is quasi judicial or evidentiary style hearings, and that typically deals with an appeal from your staff, from an administrative appeal of a decision that they make. A special use permit, which we'll get into that in a little more detail as far as those changes go into the presentation. Variances, which I understand y'all have now been combined with the Board, y'all are the Board of Adjustment also as well, and so you'll certainly, will be privy to some of those. And so, those are the things that typically see in a quasi judicial format or an evidentiary hearing. And then, the other is administratively, and so those are by right things that can go into a district, so a site plan or a subdivision or a particular use that is allowed in a zoning district. So, you really, 160D really does break down those three things, so legislative, evidentiary, and administrative, and we'll get into some details of that going forward. So, as I mentioned earlier, again, the three types that are really emphasized in 160D is, again, is administrative, legislative, and quasi judicial. So, just to restate what I said, administrative is typically your staff, so it's something that is administered by your staff, it's enforced by your staff, such as development regulations. A legislative process is typically a policy decision, so a rezoning, a amendment to your ordinance, a map amendment, those are typically your legislative processes. And then, quasi judicial, which are very subjective, they are evidentiary driven, it's almost like a court setting when you have to go through those. And so, at the bottom, you'll see sort of a spreadsheet that shows the public participation for each one of these and how it goes. So, administratively, there's very low public participation, the predictability is very high because the applicant knows what to expect, there's very low risk to the private sector, and then there's very little discretion that's involved. Legislative, public participation is very high, right? So, anybody can really come in and speak about a rezoning. There's, they can say whatever they want to say. You can have ex parte communications, you can talk about it outside the meeting. The predictability's kind of medium on that. The private sector risk can be medium to low, and the local discretion is very, very high on that. So, what I mean by that is there, you can make a lot of assumptions and really focus on things you can't as far as a quasi judicial process goes. And so, as far as quasi judicial, public participation is very low. You know, you have to have expert witnesses that provide testimony and some evidence, and that makes it very difficult for the public, the general public to participate. The predictability is very low. The private sector risk is very high, and indiscretion is variable. So, you kind of see, you know, what that public participation is like for those three main categories of the development process. Are there any questions on that? Make sense? Okay. So, this is, this is the typical process, and we love to, us planners love to put things into flow charts and spreadsheets and things of that nature. So, you can kind of work your way through a typical decision, right? So, you start on the left-hand side of your screen, and you can see where these three things take effect. So, you know, you have your administrative process, your legislative process, and your quasi judicial process. Each one of those does have a review by staff, and you'll notice that in the administrative process, it goes straight into the decision being made by staff, and if it is appealed, if someone appeals that decision by staff, it goes to the Board of Adjustment. And the process with the legislative is you have a staff review. The Planning Board would make a recommendation to the council if they think that's a good choice to make. The council has a legislative hearing, and then the decision they make can be appealed to Superior Court. There is no other town board that would appeal that. And then, quasi judicial can be a couple of things, you know? So, it can be a special use permit, it can be a variance, it can be an appeal. Staff still reviews that. It's an evidentiary hearing that can go to the Board of Adjustment or the Town Council, depending on what the case is. So, if it's a variance, it would be Board of Adjustment. If it's a special use permit, it would go to Town Council. And then, again, if that is appealed, that goes to Superior Court. And so, you kind of see how these processes work in a decision tree type thing. So, one of the other things that was really emphasized with 160D was clarifying what conditional zoning is. Currently, Clayton has some special use districts, and those are no longer legal. You can't do those anymore. They require quasi judicial zoning, which is no longer allowed. And so, as part of this process, you'll see those going away. Conditional zoning has been clarified in some other places that we're working, when we're helping them with this process, they have conditional use zoning. And so, the practice that they have had is they would require a legislative process for a conditional use zoning, and then that conditional use zoning would require a conditional use permit. And so, you can see how, why the General Assembly and legislators said, you know, this is not working the way it should. And so, that process has been cleaned up. It creates, you know, when you create conditional zoning, you're essentially creating a zoning district for that particular parcel. It runs with the parcel, any conditions apply to that parcel, the plan applies to that parcel. So, with this, you know, you're creating those specific regulations, those specific uses, and those specific design standards. And, you know, how does this affect, you know... you know, the town? Well, you'll have, again, no more special use districts, and the existing planned developments, or the PUDs, will automatically become conditional zoning process. And so, those are some things that will be cleared up with this process going forward. Any questions on that? Okay. So, the subdivision process. The way the statutes are being rewritten, it is putting more emphasis on when a zoning decision is made. When a zoning decision is made, you're, as a planning board, are making a recommendation to the town council, and the town council's making that decision on if they think that zoning district is right. Now, in that zoning district, what does it do? It allows certain uses. It controls the lot size. It controls the setbacks. It controls the dimensional requirements. It controls the buffers. It controls all those things. So, with this, we're really wanting to shift that focus on when that zoning decision is made, because it is important going forward. And Clayton's current process is a little bit different. So, what we're shifting, and actually, what you have right now is you have the conditional zoning district, and then the rest of that process is done administratively. But if it's a general zoning district, then they have to get a quasi, they have to go through a quasi judicial hearing for that subdivision plan. And so, you can kind of see, and I'll show you in a minute what that looks like in the sort of decision matrix tree. But, you know, the thing in what we're moving towards is the subdivision is a use by right. It is a use by right through the General Assembly. And if you meet the requirements of your ordinance, you simply don't have a reason to deny it. And that is why I was saying, we were really trying to shift that attention more to when that zoning comes through. So, you do pay attention, hey, is this a district where we would like to see the density here, where we would like to see lot sizes with this amount, square footage? Those are where you really need to pay attention to those things. So, again, this is your current subdivision process, and how it's laid out under the UDC as it stands right now. You go from left to right. So, you've got a potential development, and if they are, go through the traditional zoning, the legislative process, then they have the property rezoned. Then, they in turn, so they've gone through one public hearing, then they have to go through another quasi judicial public hearing for that subdivision. So, those are two major subdivisions where you're doing the zoning, and then you're doing a major subdivision process, and then the rest would be done by staff. And then, that's an evidentiary hearing. And then, what you would do at the bottom, if you go through the conditional zoning right now, you basically get your conditional zoning, get your plan approved. You have any conditions that's associated with it, and then everything else is handled by staff. So, that's the way it's laid out right now, and it's a little inconsistent for someone kind of going through that process. So, as far as conditional use permits go, there are no more conditional use permits as part of 160D as well. Special use permits are still allowed as a quasi judicial process, but they are, the conditional use permits are going away. And so, right now, in your ordinance, you have conditional use permits that go to the Board of Adjustment, and then you have special use permits that go to your town council. And so, you know, some things to think about during this process, and whether it happens with this, or it happens when you do a full UDC update at a later date, is to think about, you know, who needs to see those. Is it the Board of Adjustment that sees special use permits? They have the right to do that. Or is it that it does stay with town council? So, one of the things that you'll see is, again, there's no more conditional use permits. A lot of those have been shifted into special use permits. And something to think about going forward is, is the council want to see all those special use permits, or is that something the Board of Adjustment should see? So, that's sort of a pretty good change. Site plan review. So, as far as 160D goes, it really, if it's a use by right in that district, and it meets the standards, it should be an administrative process. And the town, right now, you have different levels of review that has to go through different boards. And so, we're moving towards that being more of an administrative process. Now, 160D is very specific that you cannot put conditions on things that are legally not allowed, that would not otherwise legally enabling by the ordinance. And so, what that means is if you have a plan that goes through, and, you know, maybe there wasn't a buffer that was shown on it, and the ordinance requires a 20-foot buffer, well, you can still require that as a condition of that plan. Now, what you can't do is, if you think a 50-foot buffer's required there, but your ordinance doesn't require a 50-foot buffer, that's where you get into a little bit of trouble there, as far as conditions go. So, if you, kind of summarizing that process, the way that we are moving towards this with 160D is administratively, you have zoning permits. You have subdivisions and plats. You'll have administrative amendments to traffic analysis and site plans. And so, site plans right now are being done by the planning board and the Board of Adjustment, and that would shift to the administrative process. Planning board and Board of Adjustment, well, planning board would do, obviously, rezonings, conventional and conditional. Ordinance amendments, conditional use permits would move to special use permits by town council. Site plans would move to administrative. Variances would be Board of Adjustment. Administrative appeals would be Board of Adjustment. Just as a side note, how are y'all, how is that going to work as far as planning board and Board of Adjustment? Are y'all, how does that look like when you have a case?
So, typically, we'll have the public hearings at the beginning for the Board of Adjustment items, and then shift down to the planning board items, like site plans, after.
So, you switch?
So, we'll open the public hearing for the quasi judicial ones, and then move on to administrative.
They switch hats, right? So, one thing about, and then, again, the town council, you know, of course, handle rezonings, ordinance amendments, especially use permits. Now, you know, one thing with government is there's always a checks and balances system, right? So, by moving site plans to the administrative side, if there is an issue where an applicant says, you know what, town staff, you're not doing your job right. You know, this is not what the ordinance means. Well, then, they can appeal that, and it goes to the Board of Adjustment. So, there's that sort of checks and balances there. You know, as far as the special use permits go, that's going to be something I think that we'll need to talk more about as we get into the bigger update. You know, do you want to have certain things that are special use permits? And there have been some minor changes that are part of this, which we'll go over with in a little bit. Does that make sense? Does anybody have any questions on that?
So, Chad, this is, if this is specific to Clayton, or will this be?
This is, so, this is part of the 160D that everybody is going through.
This will be universal?
That's correct. Yeah. And so, what you've seen over time, and you've seen site plans and subdivision that had become a legislative process, that's a big no-no. If it meets the requirements of the ordinance, it has to be approved. It's a use by right. What happened is, probably about 10 years ago, there was some legislation that was done about subdivisions, and how it needed to be a finding of fact type thing. And I think what happened is, and it may have been 10 years ago or so, when that came into effect, and then it became this, that these had to be, if they went to a board, they had to be done quasi, through a quasi judicial findings of fact matter. And I think that part of 160D realized that that was not a good way to do things. And so, as part of this process, they're kind of going, they're fixing it, and kind of going somewhere in between. But the bottom line is, you have an ordinance that has requirements in it. And a subdivision should never be a use listed under one of those zoning categories. A subdivision is a use by right. If you meet the requirements of the ordinance, and of the state statutes, you have to approve that permit. You know, I mean, or that plan. You don't have an option. And so, that's why the key is, let's make sure we have good standards, and when that zoning decision is made, that's when you really focus on, hey, if it's going from, you know, an R20 to an R5, do we really want to see what could happen in an R5 zoning district here? Right? So, it is universally changing from everywhere. But what we did is, when we've gone through your code, this is where it's specific to yours, and some changes that are happening with yours. Some codes have been doing this for a long time, and there are going to be very little changes. Others have a lot. And so, I think that the other thing is, this has been a good opportunity for towns like Clayton to realize, you know what, maybe this isn't, this is a good time to kind of add some of these other things in there, too. And I think that's why we're meeting with, while we're having a work session with the town council tomorrow, to talk with them about some of these things, and how there are some opportunities that they may, you know, may be able to incorporate into these changes. Does that answer your questions? Yeah. Any other questions? All right. So, going to go through each one of the articles real briefly, just to kind of highlight some of the changes that were done. So, Article 1, you know, you had to go through, and you have to change every single reference that you have right now to 160A. You would think that would be really simple, but there are a lot of references to general statutes. And not only do you have to reference those, the first part of that, you have to make sure it lines up to every single one of the sub-chapters that are in there. So, a lot of people think, oh, you just do a word search, and you're good. It's just not that simple. So, obviously, stating all the correct statutes in Article 1, relocating some language to where it might be a little more appropriate to that article title. As I mentioned, migrating the conditional use permits to the special use permits, and then removing, and moving the special use districts and planned developments into the conditional zoning part. So, those were the main things from Article 1. Article 2, we, again, the table of permitted uses, you converted the CUPs, the conditional use permits, to the special use permits. And then, we actually looked in and revised some of those permitted uses that may not be a controversial type thing. And I think I took a note as far as what some of those examples were. But, you know, things such as a cemetery in an agricultural district, or inside entertainment in a business district. Like, instead of requiring a special use permit for those, making those a permitted use just made sense. And so, we went through there, and I think there were also some updates to some use types that were conflicting with state statutes. And so, we went in there, and those were modified as well. One of the other things that had to take out, that you have in your code right now, is the removal of the minimum size for homes. So, you're not allowed by state law to put a minimum size requirement on a single-family home. And those are some things that you had in the code now. And then, the other part was the clarification of the administrative modifications to objective standards. So, what that means is, if something is approved, the parameters are there as to what your staff can make a modification to, without it triggering going back to your board. And so, those were the big things in Article 2. Article 3, which is your specific use standards, you know, cleaned up some typos, and as I mentioned this earlier, really looked at some of the uses that you had to make sure they weren't in conflict with state statutes. So, you know, the General Assembly has certain definitions and certain standards that various uses have to go by. And you can't go more, you can't go less. You have to do what they require. So, group care homes, daycares, you know, things of that nature that we went through to update. So, Article 4, which is your development standards. So, these are standards that apply to everything throughout the town. So, landscaping, parking, things of that nature. You know, really realign the waivers, and then formal administrative modifications process to the variance process. And so, this is something that is something that probably is going to garner some more attention and more discussion. With the 160D changes, it's very specific about what an administrative, an administrative quasi judicial waiver is not allowed. So, the staff can't make a decision on something and waiver something that was done through a quasi judicial process. And so, we've really tried to change that process to be truly a quasi judicial process, so we'll go to the Board of Adjustment. So, if it is a, if something is modified and changed from what the rules require, that will require going to the Board of Adjustment to make those changes happen. Staff simply doesn't have the right, technically, by 160D to make some of those changes. So, you hope that's few and far between. Again, as I mentioned, Marty, with you, is that, you know, if you have good standards, and you have standards that are in place, that are implementing the things that you want from your community, and your boards, and your comprehensive plan, then you should have very few of these. They should be very few and far between. If you're doing a lot of these from time to time, then that means something might be broken in your code, and you probably need to look at that. And so, that's something that, you know, we really looked at, and we talked with staff a lot on, and it's certainly something that, you know, will garner some attention, and just some discussion on that. Does that make sense to everyone? So, Article 5, which is your natural resources, and this was, there was very little in this, but we did find some conflicting language with the state that was, had to deal with the usage of stream buffers in the area, and stream buffers to count towards your minimum lot size of a lot. And so, I think that in one part of the code, it said you didn't have to, and the other part, it said you could. And so, what we did is, we made that consistent with state statutes throughout the code. Article 6, which is your subdivision standards, clarified the fee in lieu for unconstructed improvements. So, you know, when a subdivision is ready to plat lots, they typically have their first layer of asphalt down. They may have some other improvements done. You, as a town, are required to, and have the ability to guarantee that those improvements get done. And you're allowed to get a cost estimate, and provide a performance guarantee, require the developer to provide the town a performance guarantee to assure that those things, those cases, excuse me, those things get installed. And you're required by state law to do 125%. And so, we've incorporated that into your code. And then, we provided for, again, the administrative subdivision review process, where, right now, there are parts that have to go to your board, and moving forward, it would just be an administrative process. Article 7 clarified the planning board composition and ETJ representation. So, the state law requires a proportion of your board to have a member or two in the ETJ. I'm not sure off the top of my head how many you have. Y'all have one, two?
I believe two.
Two, okay. So, we brought that in and clarified that from state statute. Removed the distinction between major and minor, and site plans, and realigned that to the administrative process. Again, clarified the conditional zoning process purely as legislative. Clarified the administrative modification standards. And again, you had the switch from conditional use permits to special use permits. The last article, Article 8, is dealing with definitions. And the state now, this was one that was really analyzed with 160D. What had happened over time is, you had counties and towns that had started morphing the definitions of things. You know, administrative decisions, what a special use permit is, what an appeal is, what's a dwelling. So, we really went through and updated all those definitions so that they do match up with 160D. And again, that dealt with dwellings and sleeping unit, what a building, what a structure is. And, you know, for me, I think for me, and a lot of people, this, having these, having consistent definitions can really save you a lot of heartache, you know, particularly when you're updating the code. And so, those were all done with Article 8. And so, that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions, or entertain any comments. We're still working through this, so this is by far not the finished product. I think that you received in your staff report, did they get the table that y'all did?
Oh, they did. They got the highlights sheet that you sent out today, and that just kind of summarizes the big parts that change in each section of the code.
Yeah. And so, you know, it's a lot to throw at you. I get it. I understand. But your staff's, you know, they've been great to work with, and we're going to continue to work with them. I guess, you know, if you do have comments, once you, you know, spend some time reading through this, I would just maybe say forward it to Haley. I guess she'd be the contact, and we can get it in our list of things to do and update. But we're also have, again, we have a work session tomorrow with the town council, and I'm sure that they'll have some comments as well. Once we have that, we're going to start working towards getting it to the adoption version of it, after we have the public meeting in November. And so, that's kind of our schedule.
Could you send it out?
Yes, sir. Yeah, actually, yeah, she's got it. She can send it out.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a very good presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Awesome presentation.
It is. And, you know, honestly, you always get a little wary when our folks down in Raleigh tell us, tell us local governments to change things. But honestly, being in the middle of this, and I've been in the planning profession for 25 years, I think this is, it's a good move, because I think it really does help clarify where things have really gotten kind of squirrely, and everywhere, you know? And I think a lot of people complain that, you know, you went from one town to the other, and it was a total, oh, totally set, totally set of different rules. And so, I think, at least now, that it helps with those clarifications, so you at least know what to kind of generally expect from wherever you go and do. know what to kind of generally expect from wherever you go and do business.
I know, looking through the information that we were sent before tonight, it was a lot, but that, your presentation really helped me. I'm fairly new to this.
Lucky you.
Kind of put some of those pieces together, but I'm sure I will have questions moving forward now that I've had more of a chance to kind of digest some of that, so, thank you.
Any other questions?
One question, I probably just missed it, Chad. I understand initial use for rezoning, conditional use permits, the line of layout, what about conditional use?
That, all that goes away. So you have, you'll have, you'll essentially have three processes now, that, when it deals with any type of development. You'll have a, well, more than that, four. You'll have a general rezoning request, which, you know, if I've got a piece of property that I want to go from this zone to this zone, I don't want to discuss what uses they are, I just want a rezoning. That's one process. You have the conditional zoning process, which, if I have this parcel and I want to go to this zone, but I'm going to make it a conditional zoning district, and I'm going to tell you, I'm going to, I'm going to put a doctor's office here, I'm going to have my site laid out this way, I'm going to, you know, I've got some neighbors in the backs, I'm going to put a 50-foot buffer back there. That's conditional zoning, right? So that's two processes. The third is going to be special use permits, and that is something that, there aren't advisory board recommendations on that anymore. That'll be something that goes directly to the town council, or if they decide later on down the road, is something the Board of Adjustment should hear. That's going to be, that's up to them. And then, of course, the variance, which would be Board of Adjustment if someone needs to, you know, change the rules, basically is what that is, or an appeal. And so, that would be it. That would be all that the, the planning board would be involved in rezoning, conditional rezoning, and text amendments. That would be the other one. So, yes, so conditional use, everything conditional use is gone. It's conditional zoning or special use permit. That's kind of what they've done with that. Does that answer your question?
I've got a question on implementation. So this would be implemented potentially in January, it takes that in January?
Yes, right. So the, with the coronavirus, initially, it was supposed to be, they said local governments, they said local governments, you have to have this adopted by January of 2020. I'm sorry, January of 2021. Because of the coronavirus, they extended that to July 1st, 2021. But the caveat was, hey, we, a lot of places were working on this, they had already done it. They said, well, that's fine, we'll go ahead and make it effective June of 2020, and you have basically a year and a month to get it adopted. But you can adopt it anytime in between there. So the main thing, the main deadline is when local governments will no long, if they don't take action and get things adopted by the 1st of July, then they'll technically be noncompliant with the state law.
But you do make this affect, when it's adopted, it will become effective?
Yes. It should become effective that night. If the council adopts it, and we go forward, and I don't know what the date is in January, but if it goes through the process and they're okay with everything, then it would get adopted and become effective that night. Yeah. Yes, sir.
And just to add, if any board member has any questions and you want to follow up, feel free to email me or Samantha. We want to make sure that you're all comfortable with the proposed changes. We can set up a Teams meeting or any follow-up meeting that's needed. So feel free to reach out.
And kind of last thing is, you know, what we do as consultants, and my background, again, I was in local government for, well, over two decades, actually got out of local government, did consulting work, and actually sat on the planning board for a little while, and then decided to run for city council, so, and got elected. So I get, it gives me a good perspective on things, because I get to see it as, you know, sitting in Haley's seat, I get to see it sitting in your seat, I get to see it sitting in the elected official seat as well. So, but I would tell you on this, there's two things. There's one, it's our job as a consultant to offer the best practices to you, to say, hey, listen, we do this, I mean, we do this all across the state. We have clients from the mountains to literally the coast, and we see things that work and things that don't work, and so, we try to give you those best practices options. The other thing is, we want to make sure you're not going to ever get sued, or, you know, hopefully, you never get sued. And it's our job to make sure that what we work with your staff on and provide recommendations are going to put you in a position, if you ever do get challenged, that it will hold up in court. And so, I would say, from our perspective, those are the two biggest things we want to try to provide you as our client.
I've got one technical question.
Yeah.
So if you have something that's tracking through, and let's say it's supposed to go to the town council in February.
Yep.
And the developer decides he's got permit choice, I guess, we adopt this in January.
Right.
You've got a TRC certified, so since it's TRC certified, with something that's in that position, then being administrative, as long as the developer agrees that permit choice and agrees under the new rules, would that automatically be?
That's a good question. So, let me make sure I understand what you're asking. So you're asking if you have something submitted prior to this becoming effective, can you get into that process halfway through and switch under the new rules?
Would it be, because what I understand permit choice, if the rules change, the developer, whether they're going to go under. So I'm saying, if you're in a situation like that, barring there being some, you know, of a change where it doesn't comply with the new rules.
Yeah, you should be able to follow that process, yeah.
Would it, you know, by virtue of that being approved by the council, could that be a possibility?
Yeah, I would think so.
Could that potentially take, you know, 30, 60 days off of it?
Yeah, yeah. And I think that was, that's a lot of this, was that some of the things that we saw, and some of the things that we heard and have seen in other communities, is that it adds a lot of time onto something that is really almost, I don't want to call it a rubber stamp, because nothing's ever like that, but, but if it's something that is, it's meeting all the requirements, and staff basically has looked at it and said, you know, the technical staff have looked at it and said, yes, it meets our ordinance, then it really is very difficult, particularly with 160D now, to have to go back before a board and for them to basically agree with that the staff said it meets the rules. Because, you know, the thing is, you know, the planning board members and town council members, you know, they have staff for that reason, right? Like, that's their job. Their job is to enforce the codes that are adopted by the town council and, you know, recommended by the planning board. And so, if you don't like the rules, then y'all have the ability to change them, right? And so, I guess, I guess that's sort of what this is doing also, is trying to make things more predictable for the process.
I hear you can give the opportunity to be in code, and like you say, something we don't like, you know, who have the time to work on that in specific?
Yeah.
Have more frequent ordinance, you know, that's even.
Yeah, and the thing, too, on this, is that, so this is really like the first step in a three-project process. So this was one, when we initially started working with the town, this was the one that had the soonest, you know, the soonest deadline to get done. So we're really focusing mainly on the 160D stuff, and, you know, there are a few things here and there, but really want to focus on that, make sure you're compliant with state law. The second part, which has already started happening as well, is the comprehensive plan, which I think you were on one of our stakeholder interviews. So that's part, and that's setting more the higher visions and the goals and aspirations as the town wants to be in 15 or 20 years. Well, after that's adopted, you're going to have new recommendations in there that come out of it. You're going to have new ideas. And so, what that's going to trigger then is a comprehensive overhaul to your UDC. So your comprehensive plan sort of is kind of the vision, and your UDC is the teeth and the way to make those things happen. And so, we know that, talking with staff, that we know that's going to be like part three of this process, that'll happen probably starting about a year or so. But there's a lot to do with the comprehensive plan, and our goal for this one was, hey, let's go ahead and make sure we get the town of Clayton 160D compliant with state law. And that's kind of what our mission was on this, with a couple of other things here and there. Yeah.
And to add to what Chad said, before any adoption occurs, we'll be working with the attorneys to make sure that the development community is, has a good understanding of what the process would be. So in that situation, whether you could choose between the codes and how that would be moving forward. So we'll have that information to you.
Thank you. Thanks. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank y'all, we really appreciate it.
Thank you for your time. Very helpful. Looks like our next item, our next and last item on the agenda this evening is 7B, a planning director update, and we will hear from staff.
Haley Hoag, senior planner. So Samantha put this planning director update together for you all, and I think she's planning to do this monthly from now on, just to keep you informed on what's going on in the department since we are so busy with all of these projects. So if there's anything in this report that you don't see that you would like to see on future reports, please reach out and let us know, and we'll be happy to add more information. And if you have any questions on anything in the report, again, you can reach out to us. Just to highlight a couple of upcoming dates, so on November 10th, we will be having our first open house for the comprehensive plan update. We'll also be having a 160D open house that same day. So from 4 o'clock to 5 o'clock, we'll be having a presentation for 160D and a Q and A. And then, from 5 to 7, we'll be having an open house for the public and everybody to attend so that we can get some feedback on the comp plan. And that will be at the community center, so we encourage you all to join us, and hopefully we'll have a great turnout. And then, the comp plan survey right now is live, so the link is in your agenda. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to take it. I think last week, we had over 700 responses already, so we're off to a good start, and that will be live until, I believe, mid-December. So hopefully, we'll get a lot more responses, and we'll be able to take that into consideration when we update the code, or, sorry, the comp plan. And then, the pedestrian planning grant, NCDOT still has not released the funds for that, so that's still on hold for now.
Excellent.
That's all I've got.
Any questions for staff? All right. Thank you so much. Let's see, last item on the agenda is informal discussion and public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak at this time? I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is that Board Member Lipscomb?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there a second? Board Member Powers with a second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.